Evening, everyone. We're gonna call the September 4th meeting to order. And for the first order of business is public comment. So you have a couple of folks in the room would either be like to use public comment too?
I just got a copy of the MRPS staff climate survey. And I'm a little concerned with, since I have my grandchildren are, well, one of them is in UES and one in MAS. M, eight, whatever it is, MMS. The numbers for UES are pretty, are pretty bad. And I just wonder if you're gonna address those in an open session. You know, we were told when you voted to take our kids, that they were coming to a place that was much better for them. And these numbers prove that to be actually false. You know, when you get percentages in the twenties, in the single digits, you got real problems and a lot of those are, it seemed to be in leadership. So I just wonder whether or not those are numbers are ever gonna be addressed in an open forum. No answer?
Well, it is our, not our practice to engage in public comment.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask the superintendent then, do you have any, will that be on the agenda at any point in the future?
I guess we can answer a technical question like an agenda, question of an agenda, I know.
So any kind of supervision evaluation of any employee would not go for the board in front of a public, in a public forum? That would, if the board were to take that up, it would be an executive session because you're discussing employees? And the, it's not the board's responsibility?
I guess I would just add that.
There's no names involved here. I mean, I'm just talking about the overall picture of UES that we were given turns out to be a fiction. So I'll just leave it at that. You're obviously, I mean, I know, I know your, I know your protocol.
Thank you for sharing your opinion.
Yeah, well, I would just, it's not just my opinion, it's, you know, it's obviously the opinion of whoever wrote this report.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online who would like to participate in public comment?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? To approve the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the past, like, the consent agenda that was hard to get out of my mouth, sorry.
Thanks, Scott. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jake. Any discussion?
So the climate survey helps get a sense of, just to sort of summarize from my own mind, it is a way to help get a sense of how staff are feeling, what is the timeline that the climate survey goes up for? Is it May, June, kind of somewhere in there?
Yep, toward the end of the school year, to assess the previous school year.
And then it's, it helps the board in board retreats sort of set priorities and goals. And it helps the superintendent evaluation committee talk about that process and setting goals there as well. And so it also helps, as I understand it, the superintendent get information about room, room for growth, areas for improvement, et cetera. Okay, and it's never really, it's always, it's always been summarized in the, in the warning or in the warrants?
I think this is the first year we've added it into the consent agenda.
But it wasn't in there.
But it's, it's been shared in previous years, just not through.
A little bit more discussion generally or not, not shared at all?
Not in board meetings, no. And just, everything you said was correct as far as how it's used. And the one thing I would add to that is that the Libby and the leadership team also take in all of the data to set their own, you know, work plans for the year in addition to us using it in the overall evaluation of the district and how we're doing.
And I also, I don't think that it existed prior to Libby. There was no superintendent evaluation committee prior to Libby starting.
Well, that's, that's correct.
I don't know if those are related or not.
This has been a component in the contract, the negotiated agreement with the MREA. It's not just given to MREA, MREA is our teachers. It's not just given to MREA, it's given to full staff.
Right.
But it is a contractual obligation of the board to do a survey of that type each year.
So has it, was it prior to the superintendent, did it, was it in existence prior to the superintendent evaluation committee? Or was it, or has that been part of the, the contracts? Was it part of that contract prior to you being the superintendent? Or did it only kind of come into existence after you became the superintendent?
I was there when I got here.
It was there before?
Yeah, I don't, it wasn't, the, the survey has changed.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how much, I can't speak to how much regularity it was done prior to my time. I don't, I've never seen those results.
Right. And does the equity committee have a little bit to do with trying to work with the questions and make the questions more effective questions? Or get at the right, get at the information that, that, that we think will be most helpful?
The equity committee helped get, helped do a revision a couple of years ago. And then just this past year, the equity committee handed it off to the evaluation committee saying that it made more sense to live in the broader evaluation universe of what the board does than the equity universe.
Right. And so it gives a sense of how communication is working, doesn't necessarily say anything about a student's experience. Students are, are students part of it?
Students don't answer this one.
Students don't answer the questions.
That's right.
Only by, I think there's some sort of how teachers and staff believe students might feel about, there are some questions that are of that nature.
Yeah.
So it'd only be as reflected through the prism of.
And then because of, because we have Panorama, which is a piece of software that helps us gather data and, and analyze data, that, that is a tool that helps us gather information to try to address where there's room for growth.
This past year was the first year that we were able to use the Panorama software.
For, for this. And we also use the Panorama software when we do, when we do do student surveys, which this one is not. Above the law, right?
And there's a possibility that they can, some of that, are there, are there surveys that go to parents? That would be tracked in Panorama too?
Yep, we did the caregiver survey through Panorama.
So they can.
At the end of last year as well.
Over the next few years, there can be sort of overlapping in that data. So that, in some ways, so that things can be I don't, I mean, that would be nice. It would be nice.
You're asking different questions in different groups, so I'm not, I'm not positive if you can compare the results with each other, but perhaps for wide generalizing themes, perhaps.
I mean, I know that it's easy to look at any piece of data and say it's, tells a huge story about whatever I wanna see. And we're always trying to figure out how to get data that has a lot of different perspectives that may not always be in agreement. What else can we do? That's what we do, we try.
Right, to your point, I think one of the things.
Go ahead, Tim, I was just letting me and off.
So Tim, Scott, and then Lynn.
One of the things I think we flagged in the summary that I think is important going forward is, I think, given the different tools, we've used different rating scales, which makes it difficult to track trends over the years. And so I think as we go forward, it's just, it's my belief, I think we should try and stick with this scale so, and stick with the general, like, we can massage questions if there's other things that come up and we wanna focus on other areas. But the more we can stick with the scale so we can track things, I think that would help, rather than seeing whatever we want in the data, kind of just give a little bit more of, you know, how are things trending? Which I think is what these things are a little bit more useful for than sort of specific action items.
So Scott and then Lynn?
Yeah, thanks. And, and Tim, you, you may have just answered my question, but I was curious about the history of the, the questions used in this year's survey and, and how many years prior of these specific questions were in the way they were used. And, and I think I heard Tim saying that, that this, that, that each year they have changed slightly, which again, to reiterate his point makes it, yeah, you can't make year over year comparisons. And so I do like that idea, Tim, of, of sticking with questions so that we have that, that ability to look at trends. Cause I agree that, that this tool is more about looking at, at how things are going and not at any one particular item, but rather, rather those trends, so. Yeah, I guess a second vote for what Tim was just saying.
Thanks, Scott. Lynn?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. And I'm assuming that as we look at the, the survey data, it will initiate a plan for the next year, like an improvement plan or something? And we'll continue to use that each year to look at some goals for Libby maybe or something? Am I correct about that?
Yeah, when we take themes from that and as well as the other aspects of the evaluation of Libby, where we've had the board fill out the evaluation and individual members of Libby's team, we come, we bring in themes from the climate survey as well.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay. Okay, great. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thanks, everybody. And just as a reminder, that consent agenda is generally just kind of pro forma things, like minutes from other meetings. And in this case, the climate survey, the warrants, payroll, things like that, that the board needs to approve as part of our business. And as we did today, any board member can pull an item off the consent agenda for discussion. Did you get my email about adding us the agenda item of the board calendar? Before we go into the presentation?
The year at a glance?
Yeah.
It's at the bottom of the agenda.
Yeah, I was just thinking it would be helpful to walk through and share with the board what we, where we've added in, but some of the priority topics that came out of the retreat.
Yeah, you would need to add that here in public.
Oh, okay, can we add that right now?
We wouldn't add it to the agenda you'd add, you'd add it here in public. So you wanna add an agenda item?
I'd like to add an agenda item. I think it'll be brief, where we take a look together as a board at the draft calendar for the year. Would you mind pulling it up on the, the screen? Just because back at the retreat, we discussed different topics that we wanted to make sure to get to this year. And Jim, Libby and I were able to figure out where some of those fit into the year, not all of them, but we wanted to give everybody an update, so.
Hold on, can't share my screen right now.
Oh.
Is he safe, at least?
Jim?
Yes.
He's on his way.
Okay.
Thank you. No, she's asking Anna for permission to share her screen. So she can share the the calendar. As we're pulling that up, I'll just say, as a refresher, the top, when we at the board retreat, the main, like the sort of like top vote getters for topics for us to cover were exploring the merger with Washington Central Supervisory Union, the community engagement and communication priority that the board had set last summer, basically finalizing that into indicators of success. Our facilities in general, particularly the fact that our high school is in Flood Plain. Equity generally as a topic was in the, in the top vote getters. And Roxbury Village School, two themes emerged from that. Our, our youngest students from Roxbury attending union, so that transition and how that's going. And the other is the, the future of the building itself. And then the, the last top vote getter was a focus on academics. So we have, you have a question?
Yeah, was there, where was the, I know that there's a lot of work being done at the legislative level. And wasn't there, was there an advocacy element? Or is that further down?
That.
Or did that live further, would that live somewhere around?
Didn't get into the topic that came up at the, at the retreat as far as things we wanted to tackle. I remember us talking about it before the retreat. So it might be something we wanna bring back, yeah. So I'll go through the ones that we have been able to land as far as getting them into the calendar. The first is the process that we're going through right now to determine the future of Roxbury Village School, which we are gonna spend the bulk of our time on tonight. And then use the next few meetings to have more discussion and question asking and a community forum, as well as spend some more time gathering public comment around it before we make a decision. Our hope is to be able to make a decision in time for the first draft of the budget for next year, which is in early November. So that one has, we've gotten that one, early December, thank you. That one, we've gotten into the calendar. The topic of exploring a merger with Wash Central, we, does not yet have any, is not reflected in any board meetings on the calendar because we don't have any work to do just yet. Jim and Libby are going to reach back out to their counterparts, the superintendent at Wash Central, Stephen, and the board chair at Wash Central, Flor Diaz, to check in with them and see where things are at. And if there's, seems like timing would work for us to take the first step together. The community engagement and, oh, yeah.
So what exactly is the timing on that? I think I had in my head that that was happening to the summer, that, that reach out to Washington Central.
They had a conversation just before, like on the last day of school, but then there wasn't anything since then, right?
No, because Washington Central's in the middle of a pretty big vote around what to do with their buildings right now, so they wanted to do that.
That's, is that coming up, like at the board level or is that like town meeting?
No, that's at the board, they're board, I think they're doing a separate town vote from town meeting this fall. I'm having breakfast actually with Stephen Del Japan on Friday, so I'll find out more information.
Okay, just curious, cause folks have been asking, well, that's an area that people are curious about.
Right.
And we're just sort of asking about timing tonight, so I was.
Right, we don't have anything just yet.
Okay.
But we.
We need a dance partner.
Yeah, we basically keep checking back in with them to say, tell us if now's good or now-ish is good.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yep. And the refinement of the community engagement and communication goal. The, as you might remember, the equity committee is holding, doing that initial work and is it mid-November?
I'm sorry, I was catching Jim up where we are, ask me, tell me again what you're doing, sorry.
The community engagement and communication goal, I think that was in mid-November, right?
For budget?
No, remember to refine and finalize that.
Uh, yeah, second November, this meeting, we have discussion of community engagement and communication priority.
Yep, so that we fit into the calendar there, hoping to, that that is the date that we will land that. But maybe there will be more work to be done after that. Facilities, we have a facilities state of the state coming up next meeting, in our next meeting. And we have, and when it comes to equity at the administrative level, we have a report on the equity plan that the administration, administrative team is putting together.
The first.
The first week, first board meeting in November. All of this is, you can see on the, so I'm running through it pretty quickly just as an overview. And then as far as the focus on academics, we have our three data presentations this coming year, one in the fall, one in the winter and one in the spring. And then lastly, the one thing that the board really wants to make sure to kind of make, be keeping track of and taking care with is the transition of our youngest Roxbury students at UES. And we asked, Jim and I asked Libby to put extra kind of information in her superintendent's report about, at, at the start of the year, about how, like, what we are doing and any kind of sense of how it's going. And then also, of course, a request for feedback and, and perspectives and information from everybody who's going through that transition. So that's where that lives right now. And just as with anything that's in the consent agenda, any board member can pull that out for discussion. And of course, if you, if we wanted to have something more robust in the calendar, we can try and fit it in. So we just wanted to let you know, y'all know where that stuff is at as far as the topics we discussed at the retreat. And again, just because it's not yet in the calendar, doesn't mean we can't find time for it. So if there is something that you were wanting the board to get to, that you don't see reflected in the calendar, please let us know. And we will try and figure out how to make it happen, if it's something that we're able to spend time on, given the priorities that we have for the year. Any questions or thoughts before we move on to the presentation? We can't, oh yeah, there's, Lynn, is that an old hand or you raise your hand again for the calendar? Okay, thank you.
One thing that might be not, that might be helpful on the calendar is potentially another row that has like legislative dates?
We do have legislative updates on there. It's just not filled in right now.
So the, there will be links to the legislative updates that are part of the superintendent's report or?
Are you asking what would live in that row?
Really, how I use that row?
No, okay, so, yes, just to remind you.
It's a reminder of what I wanna put in my superintendent reports, yeah.
I mean, you, you might, I don't know, like, I don't know the first day of when the legislature starts the session.
In January.
Yeah, those, those little things, maybe, I don't know.
Crossover, that kind of stuff?
That stuff, yeah. Just cause it would look good in there for all my political wisdom.
That's a good idea, Rhett, thank you.
Scott?
Sort of in line with what Rhett was just asking about, and I do think it would be worthwhile for us as a board to think about what sort of legislative advocacy our district is, like a strategy for each session. So that different members of the school community who are going before the legislature understand what the board and the district believe are priorities for the legislative session.
So are you asking for that to be a like an item for board discussion at a future meeting?
I think that's what I heard Rhett getting at is at least, you know, maybe at the beginning or just prior to the beginning, well, I guess not just prior, because that's holiday break. But at the beginning of the legislative session, it wouldn't be a bad idea for us to, to, to talk about, like, what we all agree are priorities as, as a board.
Yeah, and we usually meet with the, with our delegation early on too, cause I'm like, we could talk to.
That is scheduled tentatively for the eighth of January.
Oh, okay. Which seems like a related but maybe different thing that Scott is suggesting.
Well, that might be a good, I mean, cause we're not gonna know what, what's coming down the pike until we, you know, that's when we might learn, we might use that to say, you know.
Tell, tell us what we.
Tell us, tell us what we should be looking out for.
Yeah. Yep, okay.
But I'm sort of picking up this and, and from our board priorities conversation from a few weeks ago. It seems like there, there are some people in the board who are kind of interested in shaping or talking about what people from our district who are testifying or appearing might, you know, are talking about, is that accurate?
I think so. I think it makes sense for us to kind of set priorities, I think the council counts those, that's pretty common to set like high level priorities about these are the things that we want to show up on, and these are the things that we, we don't as a district. I think it's a useful exercise, it's just to kind of make sure we're clearly on the same page.
I mean, it is a platform. Whatever we decide to champion or advocate for, it's a stronger platform than I have at my house.
All right, we will figure out how to, if we can work that in to the calendar. Any other thoughts or questions about the calendar for the year?
Rodney, what's, if we decide we wanna request something, it's just you and Jim, shoot.
Yeah, if you send us an email and then we, we work it out, if, if, and where it fits in. And we'll of course, bring it up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, with that, I'm happy to hand, running the meeting over to you, Jim.
Okay, thank you for getting started. I have to admit, I forgot it was Wednesday. So it looks like we're going to the Roxbury Village presentation. And just kind of to tee this up a little, per the merger agreement, we have to consider potential educational uses for the district for the school and whether we feel there are viable ones that if we do not, the merger agreement has us, as a next step, offer the building to the town of Roxbury for sale for a dollar. There's some other provisions in there that we need to get some guidance on from our attorney. And we're gonna talk with our attorney next week just to see how such a transfer would look. But right now, we asked Libby to kind of put together for due diligence what potential hypothetical uses are. And then we are going to have, well, listen, at least one listening session and a public comment period following both this presentation and when the board meets our lawyer to figure out, you know, what the, what various options would look like from a legal mechanism standpoint. And then, you know, we're gonna take, take public comment on this, both in written form and also set up a forum when in Roxbury where people can give feedback on the futures of the school. And just to make it very clear that as long as the school is in the district's hands, we will be maintaining it and we will be ensuring that that building stays in, in good shape and good condition and safe condition.
And then just for one other process point, as, you know, you just kind of walked through the steps we're gonna take, but just so people understand that that's several weeks. And we aren't intending to make any kind of decision tonight, or even in our next meeting, or even in the meeting after that, even though this will be on the agenda, it's more the chance to have the conversation with the public and learn what we need to learn.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So to get that conversation started, the board asked me to present some hypothetical uses for Roxbury Village School that's for educational usage. I wanna stress the word hypothetical. When I was thinking about each of these, these are really broad range, they do not have detail to them because that would take a lot of time for me to do. So if there is more detail the board wants, then please direct me to do that. Would take a lot of time for me to do, um so if there is more detail the board wants, then please direct me to do that. But all of them right now are hypotheticals, so I when I was thinking about these, each slide has benefits, needs, potential costs. And any maybe additional information to add. I thought about five different opportunities and discussing with my core leadership team, which are the central office administrators. Any type of magnet type school or really you could take magnet out and any type of schooling in general for a typical population of kids. Uh a regional B O Cs for mental health supports, remote site for Central Vermont Career Center, the central office over there. Or a larger community center with childcare built into the community center. So just a little refresher um on where we are because of the budget pressures from. Uh F Y twenty five because of the change in legislation, the board decided to bus. The elementary students from Roxbury to Union Elementary School, this equated to about a one point five million dollar decrease to our local budget. Uh the Roxbury building is currently hosting an after school enrichment program on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday that started this week. M R P S is maintaining the building and the costs are approximately six sixty thousand for building upkeep. With the after school program going, so there's more custodial services, for instance, that are needed because of the after school programming. Um the cost for the enrichment program is approximately eighty five thousand dollars for the year if it lasts for the year. That was not a budgeted expense, so that will come out of um that will come out of another. Rice point or another budget line, however, we are collecting a small amount of money from families for that service, but we won't be collecting eighty five thousand dollars. For it.
Libby, is that generally it?
Yes, for right now, yes.
I'm I'm sorry, just to clarify, is the eighty five thousand because we're running the after school?
The cost of the enrichment program is approximately eighty five thousand dollars.
That on top of the sixty thousand, yes, got it, okay, so, okay, thank you.
And we were anticipating the possible grant for that, which we did not get.
We did not get the grant, right.
But we still budgeted for the cost.
Eighty five thousand dollars minus the tuition or and or grants that may be part of.
We don't have any grants that are supporting it, but the families are paying a small tuition for it, yes. Okay, so one option would be any type of magnet type school, um it could be sustainability, we talked about a steam school. The district in the past has talked about a bilingual school, that's that's linked because there was a bilingual study done. My first year superintendent?
Yeah, it came out in twenty twenty.
Okay, so my second, my third year superintendent.
I think it started your first year.
Yeah, it was a long study.
Yeah, it's a long study.
Um so the board at that time when they received that study um. Did not decide to pursue pursue the bilingual school um option. Because of what the study said, we we partnered with a well-known firm to help us with that. You could you could take any of those things out, those are just three ideas, you could put a pre K in there, you could, you know, you could take any of the. The adjectives or describers um and fill in the blank, I I just put some ideas that had been discussed in the past here. But any type, any type of magnet type school, the potential benefits could be meeting community values and desires. Um it could be innovative programming uh or alternative programming options for our kids. Uh the students would be in the building on a daily basis, which is something that the community of Roxbury really desires, so there are potential. Potential benefits that are quite large to to opening a different type of school. The potential needs or drawbacks is that this would take significant planning, um it would re-prioritize the focus of probably. Most of the central office administrators, definitely myself, Mike Berry. Um and probably Jet Jess Murray a bit, so there we would have to re-prioritize everything we're focusing on now to. To do that significant planning because it may take a couple of years to do. Um we'd want to get a lot of community input about what the focus of this school could be. Uh we would have to hire an all new staff with expertise and whatever we would be looking for. And we probably have to add some additional transportation because in order to make a magnet school type. Situation work, we'd have to have students from Montpelier also attending that school, so there'd have to be some cross buses happening. The potential cost is this would be a significant monetary investment, so just to give a ballpark figure, we state this in budget season all the time. That one teacher is approximately a hundred thousand dollars if you think about salary and benefits that are offered to the teacher contractually. Um so if you're staffing a school, that was where the primary cost savings came from. Um moving the youngest students to Union Elementary School, you're talking about teachers which are expensive. You're also talking about any type of renovation, furniture or curricular resource needs. Uh if we're doing something mag- magnet type or innovative, then you're gonna need new stuff. Because we have traditional schooling things in there right now. If you're thinking about um a larger pre K center, for instance, you're talking about adding bathrooms for renovation. So we can only house two classrooms worth of pre K students right now because we have one bathroom that fits the statute. So we would have to add two other bathrooms to the longer wing in order to have more classrooms there. And you and training, just training staff and professional learning around what whatever the focus might be. Um this option would require M R P S to add the money plus some back into our local budget, so I think the cost just. Back in the map napkin math with Christina and I would be well over two million dollars to accomplish this option, we'd be adding back into our local budget. We could go after grants, but we would not be getting a grant for a while long term a- as well as um. Something that would cover this amount of money.
Libby?
Yeah.
Um is there a possibility that um if there was a magnet type school there? That it would um attract more students, so.
You could get to tuition, some tuition revenue, yeah.
So like, you know, i- it's two million, but if it attracted, you know. Um some number of students, I don't know how many it would have to be, like a hundred or something, then that would be twenty thousand a kid. Um and that would be on par with what we're spending, I don't know, close, depending on all the fancy stuff, but um so then it wouldn't really be. Like an addition to our budget, it would be.
That would be a large bet that the board would be taking, then we could attract that many kids.
It would have to be really quite something.
Right, exactly, yeah, I I think that would be a. The board is welcome to make that decision and it would be a very risky one with taxpayer dollars.
Wasn't U E S doing some like nature programming?
We do, we work with the Eco Center, it's called Eco with North British Nature Center, yeah.
Oh, sorry, um wasn't at at Roxbury, I meant, um were they doing like some some nature education?
They have Forest Fridays in place, they were actually, if the building were still there this year, they would be working with the with the North Branch Nature Center. As well, Shannon had plans to to make that more um structured with Eco.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think here was where location also becomes consideration because it is not. In or near a high population area, so a lot of this under kids would have to come. Fairways to get them. The basket Jordan.
What what could we look to as magnet schools in Vermont that are successful? And or any sort of need studies that have been conducted for these things to understand what the sort of. Appetite for magnet schools are in the central Vermont area.
The only magnet schools that I know of are in Burlington.
Like what?
The Sustainability Academy there.
And so that's taking that is that part of the Burlington School District?
Yes.
And that pulls students from the surrounding Chittney County town?
No, it pulls kids from primarily the Burlington School District. It's an option for kids in Burlington, do they have kids from other towns, perhaps, I don't know that answer, I can certainly ask Tom Flanagan, the superintendent there. But it is pri- it is considered a a school of Burlington.
Okay.
Of Burlington School District, those are the only ones I know of.
So when I think magnet, I'm thinking more kind of like what Jake was talking about, like pulling from a lot of neighboring districts. Or a specific type of education, does that just not really, is that like not a thing in Vermont or? So this would be kind of a new. Has there been any to your knowledge studies or like, you know, like needs assessments, like there's really an appetite for this kind of? Okay.
Not that I know of.
Alright, thanks.
Scott?
I I think Lynn might have been in front of me, but really quickly Lynn, um um my my point I think is related to what. Tim was just saying, I mean, in a sense, um the the um. Vocational education centers are magnet schools, they are drawing from a large geographic area, granted, they're they're a specific type. Um but but that isn't a successful example and at at those, but it's certainly in central Vermont. Not nearly as many uh students who want to get in um are accepted and so. Um there is an appetite at least for some for some types of like targeted uh magnet type school. Um and then really quickly, while I'm while I'm unmuted, I think Libby, I heard you mention pre K and I know we got an email. Um about pre K and so pre K would be a type of magnet school, I think I heard you say.
Um. You can take magnet out and just put a school.
Yeah.
If talking about a school, you know, it could, if it's a school full of three and four year olds, you'd have this in pieces up here.
And so I don't know enough about like um Head Start programs, but is there not federal funding? That um can help with that type of programming?
I talked with Head Start about Roxbury Village School and they were interested for a hot second. Um the location is a drawback, they don't believe they would get enough students to make it worthwhile. Uh they cannot staff their programming right now, so for instance, we were a Head Start program here in Montpelier at Union. Um and they could not staff the program, so we had to increase our pre K capacity to staff their program, so they have staffing challenges. Um so yes, they are federally funded and um they are not interested.
Is there um, has there been any exploration of like, you know, the uh larger. Universe of school types, like just saying, you know, we would like to rent this out for a. Uh an educational purpose, is anyone, you know, interested in renting it from us?
Don't you have that as an option on here, it's one of the options for us to consider offering rental space.
Okay.
And does that, I mean, I think it was a question for Pietro, does that fulfill the, I mean, it has been a true purpose for this district?
Lynn, do you have your hand up?
Uh yeah, I do, um is the two million the cost for the initial year or is that the cost for running it in subsequent years?
Nope, that would be everything, that would be that two million would, remember, that's a wide. Ballpark figure, first of all, it should not be quoted, but if we cut one point five million with what was running in the school. Last year, then two million would be a pretty good guess for getting a specialized system up and running. And it would continue based on healthcare costs is rising and salaries rising and just cost of goods rising, I think that would probably be a pretty good ballpark. To that we would need, the board would need to consider going forward in the budget.
And then the initial year would probably be more than that if you're doing renovations and stuff, right?
Yep, it would depend on what renovations would be needed.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I'm also hearing you say that it might take two or three years to even get the plan.
We don't have this right now, so yeah, they're they're significant. Yeah. Okay, so another option would be a regional B O Cs, Act one sixty eight is linked for members of the public or the board to. To read last year, uh the legislature did pass a what they call a B O Cs bill, it's a. It's a structure that is in other states that tends to help with certain things, so I grew up in New York State, for instance. Um and had a teaching gig in New York State and for a little while and B O Cs took very low incidence. They were separate schools that took very low incidence, kids with special needs, with low incidence special needs. Um so it was not an inclusive state, in other words, like kids were taken out of the public schools. For those instances and attended B O Cs, B O Cs also did professional learning for teachers, um some B O Cs run transportation hubs. For school districts, uh what the my colleagues and I around the region have talked about is developing a regional B O Cs. For student mental health needs because this is a challenge for all of us. So some potential benefits, it would be provide needed mental health services for students in the region. There'd be a lot of collaboration across the region and it could alleviate some pressures on local schools to provide acute immediate. Mental health services for kids who really need it, um that we are all struggling with right now. So potential needs or drawbacks with that is that, again, there's significant planning with our regional partners. Um again, we'd need to hire new staff with significant expertise in mental health and those particular. Um unicorns are very hard to come by right now in the state. And we would be going for a startup grant from the state in Act one sixty eight, I believe it's ten thousand dollars, which is not a whole lot of money, it doesn't go very far. That would probably cover the planning pro- process. Potential costs would be a monetary inves- investment that would be shared across the region, so again, one teacher equals about a hundred thousand dollars. Um but again, that would not be borne by just M R P S, it would be borne by the region. Um furniture, curricular resource needs, additional training for that staff, because again, we're talking about a highly specialized staff in mental health. Um and if we were running the books on this, then we would need additional business office support because Christina could not take that on by herself. Our business office runs a thirty two million dollar budget and there are three of them in that room running that, so we would need to, if we were the. Um people who did all the paychecks and all that kind of stuff, which we likely would be because it's an M R P S building. Then um we would need to hire additional business support to do that.
So a regional B O Cs isn't a. Standalone instrumentality, it's a. It's like an agreement amongst a bunch bunch of districts where one district is like the operating partner type of thing?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be that way, but it it in this case it would be because we have the building.
So it wouldn't be like a new district?
No, no, so for instance, right now we have a regional collaborative with pre K, so when the pre K law changed. So allow for people to use public dollars to go to private pre K, so I think my kid. My kid who's now a junior in high school, that was when he was he was starting pre K, well, he was one of the first people in our district to do it. Um we have one employee who technically on paper is an employee of the Berry District. But all of us pay her paycheck and she runs all of our private pre K tuition, her name is Becca. She's presented the board once, maybe twice, um a while ago, um so she runs all the. Pre K for the region, she ensures all our private pre K's are licensed, all the things that we would have to do if we did that on our own, but she does it for the region. So it it would kind of, it's not a B O Cs, because it's not a school.
B O Cs is a new thing.
Yeah, this is a new idea, yes.
Okay, and you said there's a ten thousand dollar planning grant for anyone who wants to.
There's ten thousand dollar grant, I don't think it has to be used for planning, but that would probably be what it would cover.
But for folks who want to give it a whack, it's we can appeal to the state for ten thousand dollars to do it.
According to one sixty eight, yes.
And then does this provide? You know, we were talking earlier about the potential merger discussion and whatnot, so. Some potential regionalization even within the districts, is this. Complementary to that, um perhaps, it seems like, I mean, there's a lot of questions I have about, I'm sure everyone does, given that this is a new new creature. But there seems to be if if there's a a bigger regionalization push that. To have some kind of regional uh asset. For a an acute need, um. I don't know, and and there's money available, look at it with a bit more rigor, that might be an interesting thing to kind of push a little harder on. Or and and we're just investigating a little further.
So the regional soups are doing that, um I would just state again, you need a dance partner, right?
And oh, for sure, I I understand that there's a lot of.
Yeah. So I meet with regional superintendents once a month, um and we have had the conversation of using this building in this way. And there is a lot of pushback because it because of the location. So the transportation cost from, so for instance, Harwood is part of our district.
Yeah.
Kids from Harwood would be traveling, kids with acute mental health needs would be traveling over an hour. To get to a place that is nowhere near their hometown.
On a regu- I guess I'm a little unclear about, like, on a regular basis or for like or for like appointments or like, I guess I'm trying to. Or like, I guess I'm trying to.
What we have talked about is a place when a kid is seriously in crisis and needs like a two week place to, to regulate.
So in um Plainfield, there's a school called Maple Hill. School, is that a BOSEs or is that simply?
That's a private school.
That's a private school that kids go to.
That we pay tuition to.
Right, because there's kids that have those real struggles that need that extra, extra, extra support. This would not be that.
This would be that for a short, short period of time.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And is there a BOSEs school in Vermont? Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
There's that. Libby, why did you not, I, I think, Tim, you have other questions. I'm sorry.
No, go for it, please.
Um, why did you not include uh in a draw, as a drawback that it's removing kids from. Their school. Is that not necessarily a drawback? I guess it's part of the.
No, it isn't.
Purpose of this.
Yeah, it is a drawback. However, it's happening already.
I see.
You know, it, but without the support, because.
Uh huh.
You know, like, if a kid is unsafe at school, for instance, then they're typically sent home. Right? So this would not be that. This would be sending them, what we have talked about. That, what we've talked about is very broad and, you know, hypothetical and visionary and all that kind of stuff. No details whatsoever.
Yeah.
But what Massachusetts has a type of system like this, that Lane Millington, who was the superintendent Randolph and Ryan Harity, who's the superintendent. So both of them were principals in Massachusetts. And they've talked about how that, this type of system, like a two week place for regulation. And right, I'm looking at you because you are much more expert in this than I am. Um, was beneficial, is beneficial in Massachusetts and works well. So because we had expertise. You know, or knowledge of a certain system that worked for that state, that's what we were focused on.
I see.
As a regional superintendent group. It doesn't mean it has to be focus of conversation. However, the location will be, is a constant. Libby, we can't do that because of the location is constantly brought to my attention.
I would say at this level of need, the cost is exorbitant. To do this well. For instance, the Vermont Psychiatric Care Hospital has a budget of approximately twenty four million dollars for twenty four beds. And is over budget because. It takes a lot of people to be safe.
Yeah.
And, and people that are good at, at, you know, not having conflicts with people who need to, who are in conflict. They're in a crisis and their, their bodies, you can express their.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've talked about that as well. And, and the people, as Red Nose too, just aren't there. So we could build it and we'd have kids and we wouldn't have adults there who can do a thing you had to do.
So are BOSEs by definition just for student mental health needs? So is this kind of similar to the magnet school idea in, insofar as there's a, a universe where. If there's, and I don't know if there's any for other types of services or other types of. Pedagogy that's specified to a certain cohort, but is that, is that a possibility that a BOSEs could. Might have another driving purpose and. And if so, I, I mean, I guess it's, it does seem that. I guess the things I'm attracted to here are a push for regionalization, an opportunity to um, you know, do some planning. With a grant in a building, like there, I, I get that it might not all line up. But those things seem to kind of have some synergy that's attractive, uh, that would bear a little bit of exploration. I don't know.
The big needs that the regional superintendents talk about quite a bit are mental health. That's number one. But that is number one, two, three, four, and five, I would say. Um, and then the next one is for low incidence special needs. So when I say low incidence, I mean, um, low kids who, who have low functioning, um. Autistic behaviors and are, you know, are unsafe with their bodies, need somebody with them, if not two people with them all the time. And don't um communicate with communication boards or something of the like. Um, so very low incident, special needs. Again, it, those are, that would be like the top ten. I mean, there really aren't other needs that school districts talk about. Doing something regionally. Um, we just haven't. That doesn't mean we couldn't. I don't think there'd be a lot of interest.
For something outside of.
Yeah, for a sustainability school, for instance, like. Why, yeah, I don't think there'd be a lot of interest there, but I could, I could ask. There's no harm in asking.
I'm, I'm curious just, well, you, you know, sort of why, why I'm curious, it seems like. It's a new opportunity. So it's, you know, and we have a building, so that. Might benefit from a, from an educational use, so I don't know. Seems.
Well, just as an idea for just the process. Maybe, cause again, obviously we're not making any. Today, and perhaps, and we have another meeting, our next meeting is. Um, also, this is the main item on the agenda. I wonder if. As Libby said earlier, you know, this is the broad overview of these ideas. If maybe there are specific questions, Tim, that. That go along with your line of thinking that could help. You, as you continue to think about this, maybe like email those to Libby so she can bring them back into the next meeting. I don't know. I just think. Like, you know, there's no need to force ourselves to try and say yay or nay to any of these ideas tonight.
I don't know. No, this is, this is just, that's not where I was going with the comments. It was more trying to kind of push around on these ideas to better understand them and.
I think another, another factor is um. Accessing R V S from the west is slippery. Accessing R V S from the east is not possible. And it's a long way from, you know, so you're, you're, you're talking about your North Field exit, your Randolph exit. And so it's, there is an access element to Roxbury Village School that, it's why I live there. Cause I like to be left alone, but um, that makes it tough if you're talking about transporting kids over mountains, et cetera. Um. You know, those are factors when you're talking about like a, a two week place to go through crisis. You know, um, because it's not like, I mean, does that, you're not staying there overnight, right? And you're having a hard time well tri- well being transported and you're on a dangerous road. I don't know. It's a tough, those are, those are also factors. Just, just accessing the space is hard.
Whenever I've brought up Roxbury Village School for a use such as this, that is immediately what I am shot down immediately because of the location. Right? Regional superintendents. I think, I think Glenn has her hand up.
Oh, yeah. Um, I, I just wanted to double, double check this. You said it would be short term use, right? Like not long stays.
I said, that is what the superintendents have looked into and discussed. There is no planning that has happened. There's nothing written on paper around this.
Yeah, I've been out of that loop for a while, but I know, you know, there are a number of schools, some of them in, in very rural areas. That have a specific focus. For example, um, you know, kids who've been involved in perpetrating sexual abuse or something like that. And um, I wonder, you know, if we have um, maybe some potential for a, a longer term program there. For, doesn't have to be that issue, but you know, there are, and Berry for a long time had a, of course, there's in a town, a city, but. They had a program um for kids um who just couldn't make it in the regular school system. So they went daily. For the year to a program in Berry. So I don't know what, I don't know what the needs are now. And I understand the complication of traveling. Um, and I also don't know where there's potential there for like small residential or something.
May I make an observation?
Yeah.
So, um. Those are educational purposes, not to like shoot it down because there sort of is, but they're sort of not. And the, the one thing that I fear most is that. Roxbury is unable to convince the select board to take ownership of the building, at which point an R F. P becomes a possibility because what do you do with a building if the town doesn't want it? Or the select board doesn't want it. And I don't know whether the select board does. Um, and I, I know a lot of community members do. They want to make it into a thriving heart of the community, but that's my biggest fear is that the select board. Has of a different mind, that they don't want to spend other people's money on even basic maintenance. Or any kind of investment, um, because they don't, maybe, maybe, just imagine there are a group of people that don't want to spend taxpayer money. That's a possibility.
Which is frightening. And like, and I, and I apologize for not having the timing of these pieces. Well positioned in my head, but like, I'm, I'm very interested in knowing what Roxbury ideally would like from the building. Um, cause that would, would inform a lot of this. And like, if we got the ball rolling on some project to create, you know, some special school. But it wasn't what Roxbury wanted, um, you know, that, that would not be ideal.
And I think ideally what Roxbury wants is for their youngest learners to be filling Roxbury Village School again.
Yes. Right.
But I'm also saying that like what the majority of Roxbury, you know, right now, the select board. Determines whether they will take ownership. If, if the, if the district is unable to find an educational purpose, it's on the select board. But the select board may not. Have the same wishes as a great number of people who, um, you know. Don't want to run for select board.
So is it a situation that where um, we try to find an educational purpose and if we can't, we offer it to the town for a dollar?
Basically, that's the general.
Basically, and then we can ask Pietro, there's some, I mean, you know, for instance, say we, we're not sure. We say we want to know a little more about how some of these regional conversations are going to play out. Um. Can we say we don't know and, and, and hold on to it? Like, there's.
Yeah, you just roommate, you just keep paying.
Yeah, just keep paying the upkeep of it, which is definitely, definitely a possibility.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I mean, I'm a little in your camp, Jake, of if. I, I would kind of like to know what Roxbury is thinking, because if we are holding on to it. You know, with the idea that there might be a, you know, kind of remote possibility that we might do something regionally. Also knowing that like, there's a good possibility that if something recently does occur, that Doty's gonna be open and it's a bigger, more accessible facility. Um, you know, are we keeping the town of Roxbury from doing something on like a two percent chance that we do something?
Hmm.
Um, you know, that, that's kind of something I, I'd like to know, especially if we are gonna. Hold on to it.
Should we keep going?
Yeah.
So uh, before we do here, I have not talked to um, Jody at C V C C about this. So this is completely hypothetical, just want to put that out there. We could rent the space to C V C C. Uh, potential benefits, C V C C has stated they need additional space. Um, it could be a potential revenue opportunity and rental income. It's an educational use. Our students are there. Um, potential needs or drawbacks, they'd be, need to have significant renovation to accommodate technical education needs. It's suited for currently an elementary school, not a technical education school. We would net, uh, every district, every sending district would need additional transportation options and the location is a drawback, once again. The potential costs, it'd be a one-time monetary investment for renovation. Um, and the additional transportation cost for sending districts, as far as C V C is concerned, they'd have probably additional hires in some way. Um, C V C C is not expecting an interest in R V S and it's located nearly an hour away from some, if not most sending districts. So there's a, there's a location difficulty there.
But again, this is not something we've explored.
Not explored at all. No.
And is it the same thing, Libby, where in the magnet school, you were saying you could take magnet out of it, you could take steam out of it? But we could say there are other, other entities we could rent it to and have it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's not our only.
I think I, I went to C V C C instead of saying rental space to an educational purpose, because we have, I mean, they. They're part of our district.
Easy to picture.
In essence, yeah.
Easy to picture.
And it has an educational benefit for our district because we do have.
Right.
Students who go there.
Students from this district.
Yeah, right.
So, so say if we, you know, it would be tough to argue that renting it to say a private school. Might have an educational benefit for our district unless it's serviced district.
In fact, I don't know if we could rent it to a private school be, unless it was an additional building. Because the state has put a moratorium on adding any additional private schools.
Okay.
So a new school of a different entity, a private school could not come. That is not, is not in existence currently, could not come and say, we're starting up a school and we'd like to rent your space because they can't in the state.
But like, say if a Waldorf school wanted to move that currently existed, that could be a possibility, but that's also, we, we don't know that at all.
Right.
Yeah, so it would be good to, to, you know, see. Um, if any, if anybody would be interested in that kind of thing, like a Waldorf school moving or like a Pacha moving. Um, I don't know what's out there. And I, I feel like, you know, it, um. Just kind of offering it out to see what, what is possible. Um, could be valuable and, and that would take the pressure off us to control it so tightly. You know, and it would also remove the renovation cost and a lot of these.
If it were an elementary school, yeah.
I mean, they're like, uh, it's, I don't, in, in some scenarios, it may not be on us to visualize what the, what it can be. Like, we're saying, we want it to be an educational purpose, but come to us with what you would do with a space.
Okay. Uh, we could move the central office to R V S. Potential benefits would be to increase space. There are space needs here at M H S and particularly at M S N S. Um, all of central office employees would be in one space. We're currently spread out between uh, two different buildings right now. Um, there'd be more training space for staff development if we were to do that. Potential drawbacks, we'd need significant renovation to accommodate office needs. Central office staff would be far from every other school in the district and the majority of the community. And it would be a significant increase to commute time for most central office staff, which would make me worry about losing people. Potential costs, it'd be a one-time monetary investment for renovation. There'd be additional mileage costs because we'd be driving back and forth to multiple, many people would be driving back and forth to Montpelier every day. Um, and a potential loss of staff, which when you're hiring new administrators and things, that can be expensive.
To you, just before we go on to that one, because it was raised in an email um, to us earlier tonight about how. Like, why would this even be one of the options? I just wanted to say, we had at the, at about this time last year. You had brought to the board the idea of finding a different space for the central office team. Um, because we have such space needs at the high school and the middle school. And so that's why we thought, you know what, if we were even going to consider something in downtown Montpelier and we already have a building, let's at least have this be an option. So I just, that's, I.
And.
That context is out there.
Is there a way, you know, how do you, how do you dig into this? To find out what this would mean to the central, I mean, is there a way to, to survey central office staff? Or, I mean, we had a, we, we, we had, you know. We went into the summer and we were looking at spending two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. At an open office space for central office staff where Onion River Sports is and now. We still have the need, we still have central office folks who are in closets and all these other things that doesn't seem nice. I'm just. Is there a way to, to, to? I mean, that presentation came up, there was, there was the possibility of spending two hundred fifty.
Yeah, before budget season started.
Right.
Or anything else happened. Um, I have not brought, broached this with central office staff. I will, I can say probably the biggest, the two biggest factors in the negative column on this. Or in the challenges column, let me say, is that it's, you know, twenty five minutes away from the, from where every child will be. And every staff member will be um, outside of the central office. And I think of the swatting incident here at M H S, for instance, all the administrators at that point in time when that first happened, we're over at U E S. And Jason Gingold and I were here in two minutes after we were alerted to, you know, that, that couldn't happen, right? In that kind of emergency situation, which thankfully doesn't happen a lot. Right? In that kind of emergency situation, which thankfully doesn't happen a lot, but it does. Um, and you know, human resources would be there. So our, today, X Jennings biked over to human resources. On his break that, that negates that possibility. So, um, so.
Good exercise.
It is good exercise. It was crazy in the office. Uh, but it's far away from, it would be far away from every staff member we have and every child we have. So. Um.
I mean. Just a devil's advocate, you know. Grownups instead of children making the trip, you know.
Yeah, we, yeah, most definitely. I mean, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's would be the board's prerogative. You're one hundred percent correct. Um, I think that the second challenge is that half of our central office staff live. Um, not in this exact area. So for instance, that would, just for myself, that would be an hour commute daily, or hour commute one way daily. Um, and then you add in another commute back and forth to Montpelier to get to the school building. So there's, that's a lot of commuting time. Um, for a large percentage of our staff. And I'm not just talking about myself. I can just talk about myself because I know where I live. Um, but there are other people who live in Chittenden County or who live in Southern Vermont area.
Do you think in the, I mean, we'll get the calendar and see facilities, state of states next week. And so like working this issue backwards from the space needs in the buildings. I'm honestly not super clear on what the needs were and are that drove the initial consideration. Is, is that going to be on the, that part of the state of, state of the facilities report that was next, next?
So Andrew gives a very, um, in-depth book to the board around the facilities. It's, it's very in-depth. He doesn't go through all of it. I can find when those board meeting presentations were on space.
I could share.
Right, you got it?
Yeah. Okay.
So I think the best way is to go back in time and see.
Send the email home, boy.
Just.
That'd be great.
And do those, from whenever that was, do those persist? Are they, are there greater needs now? Are there fewer? So pretty much.
Persists.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, basically, there's just not an office for every. Hmm. There's just not an office for every part of the central office team. And there's just some challenges of like finding conference rooms and training spaces.
Okay, so is the space more? I guess when I read that, I thought you were talking about like space for classrooms and student activities in, is what's needed here. But you're saying it's more for like the professional office.
No, it's, I remember I've been watching those.
Yeah, there's, there's some. There's some, if I recall, there's some classroom space that could be freed up.
Yeah.
The central office space. I mean, they're, it's, it's crunching both a little.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd wa, I'd watch. If you're interested in that piece, I'd watch the, uh, the presentation that was made to the board last year and read. Former facility reports. Uh, Lynn has her hand up. I don't mean to be calling on her, but I can just see it on my screen.
Um, that's what I was gonna say, that I think in the facility report, it suggested freeing up space in the high school by having the superintendent's office move out.
Yep, but you will be enthralled by a very long report by Andrew in the next board packet.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, we could create some sort of MRPS community center. Uh, potential benefits, we could offer daycare to employees. Um, we could increase flexible pathway opportunities for our. Students here at MHS. We have a robust flexible pathways program here now. We can increase it with community garden. With childcare opportunities, with senior care, et cetera. Um, we could continue the after-school enrichment, um, at Roxbury Village School. And this could have some potential revenue because it could, if you have educational uses in there with flexible pathways, perhaps you could rent the space. To other entities as well, or something. Uh, potential needs, the location again is a drawback. New employees with specific expertise. Um, we'd have to increase our, our teaching staff with flexible pathways, particularly. Um, if we were offering things like childcare and senior care. Um, we, that would need some significant collaboration with the town, I would think, about what the needs are because we would be pulling from. Um, the needs from the town immediately, you know, because of the location. And it would, it would, um, have significant planning needs. Potential costs would be one-time monetary investment again for renovations. If we were thinking about something like a childcare center. As I said before, with statutes and regulations, we have two classrooms that can work with three and four-year-olds. I do not know what the statutes are for, uh, more daycare possibilities. That's not my realm. Um, but we have only two classrooms that are outfitted for, um, three and four-year-olds because they need, uh, closest to a bathroom. They need a specialized toilet, they need specialized sized sinks. Um, and we have one of those. So two of our classrooms are close enough to one of those bathrooms. We'd have to add. Uh, it would have additional transportation costs because we'd have to get the kids back and forth if they were doing flexible pathways opportunities. We'd have to add new employees like daycare providers. We'd probably want some sort of building manager in place there. Um. If we were doing something this robust, we'd need to add business office staff because we'd essentially be running a business. Um, and we would need to hire teachers. It's unlikely that the revenue would equal or surpass the expenses. I just put that out there. And while I don't have exact figures, I can imagine that it would be unlikely. So it would be an add to the budget. Uh, looks like Scott has his hand raised.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, so at first glance, it seems like this option is like the least risky. Least expensive. I, I, I totally understand that it's unlikely that revenue would equal or surpass expenses, but. But it, it, it wouldn't, it's, it's the lowest bar for, um, success. And with, with little investment upfront compared to the others. And it, it could offer a little bit more time in thinking about the best use of the, of the building. For our community, um, as a school or for the Roxbury community as something else. Um. Yeah, I mean, just, just the after-school. I mean, essentially, we're doing this right now with our after-school enrichment program. Um, and you know, relative to our overall budget, it's a, a, a small expense. Um, and so, so I would be most interested in, in what are the other options to, to go along with that after-school enrichment that we're, that we're currently doing?
And those were the hypothetical situations that I was thinking about.
Any further questions or? Ideas people maybe didn't think in the next? Got?
Yeah, so Libby, I'm curious of, of all of the options that you presented, all the hypotheticals, what are the? What are, what is or are those that most excite you as a, as an educator and as a, as an administrator?
I don't feel confident in any of them to answer that question. I think any of these scenarios would cause. Um, a significant veer in the direction of the district. So. And what I say by that, I'm not saying that in a negative way. What I'm saying that in is that it. That we would need to stop some of the work we're doing now at the. At the district leadership level. To fully commit to this work.
Yeah, Lynn?
Um, I just wondered, um, what the, I know the Roxbury Transition Committee was, um, discussing some of this. And there was going to be a meeting, or there was a meeting with the selectmen about this, and I'm not clear, although I've looked at the minutes and stuff. Um, exactly what happened with that and what, what initiatives are coming from Roxbury about the use of the building?
So to my knowledge, we have Tom Frazier here in the room who is working with Judy. Forgive me, Tom, I forgot Judy's last name. What is it?
Lusk.
Lusk, thank you. Um, with a community group around ideas for Roxbury Village School. Um, we've met, Andrew and I have met with Tom and Judy once. Uh, the select board, uh, led by Renee.
Bouchard.
Bouchard, um, has been in contact with Andrew, myself, Rhett. Um, a bunch of times with lots of different questions. So the select board is looking at it and asking questions about this. I honestly have not looked at the select board minutes recently, not since summer. Um, so I'm not sure what their conversations exactly have been like. I don't know if Rhett, you can speak to that.
They have a recent question too, so there.
They had a very recent question about PCBs, um, and when the testing was going to happen. So that came in this week. Um, so they are, it is, it is on the minds of the select board. Um. The Rocks, I don't want to speak for the transition committee, so if I say something wrong, Rhett, then just interrupt me. Um, the Roxbury Transition Committee talked about this briefly and kind of came to the decision that they weren't the, the best group to have this conversation. Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, um, the, the transition committee. Um. Has a lot more, it's lost some of the Roxbury members and, um. You know, it, it, I've been. There's, there's been some distrust, whether the transition committee is trying to determine what the outcome will be. Whether it is. I mean, maybe potentially even. In the future, as if the Rocks, as if the transition committee or the, or the school board is trying to decide what should happen with the building. Once the district's no longer in ownership of the building. I don't fully understand. There's, there's a lot of. There are a number of different camps. There's not a tremendous amount of cross. Clear cross-communication. Um, but there's a lot of work being done to sort of. As I understand it. Talk through a lot of possibilities, narrow possibilities and have the, and for. Tom and Judy and the, and the group that's working on understanding what the possibilities would be. They would like to have a short list for the select board that makes it an easier decision for the select board. Once this, that, that decision comes to the select board. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's basically it. I mean, our, our biggest fear is that the select board will turn and hold it down. I don't think, I think that that fear has pretty much gone away. Um, I think there's been kicking in the building. They realize it's a huge asset to the community and. Our focus. That is on the committee is, um, pretty much along the lines of the last slide you had up there. Um, we want to keep it education-focused. Heavy to childcare and pre, preschool, maybe preschool program half a day. And then the second half of day, you know, these people transition to, the room would transition to childcare. They had a setup like that years, years ago when Dottie Gliffrey was there. She ran this, the.
Pre-K.
Pre-K and then at whatever time the childcare. So it was all the same room and it worked out, I guess, pretty well. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking at. Um. They want to have a, maybe a youth center, a senior room, etc. If there's a Bridgewater. Comparison, where they took their school and it made it into a, uh, a. It's, I think they have three rooms of childcare. Of course, there's a lot bigger communities than what we have. But you gotta remember, you keep saying Roxbury is a long way from everywhere, but it, it's not. It's dead center between. Randolph, Barry, Montpelier, the Valley. And Williamson. Absolutely the same mileage each place. And right now Northfield kids are going over that Williamson. I mean, you know, they're, you know, so. I don't think, I don't think that distance is such an issue, especially with childcare. People make tremendous. Uh, cha, uh, you know, face tremendous challenges getting childcare and they're willing to make those trips. If it's good quality childcare, which is really hard to find. And I think, you know, given the facility that we have. Um, you know, sliding into that slot could be much easier than somebody having a home that they're trying to retrofit. To, to make into a childcare facility. So I think, you know, our problem is the money. You know, will the town support, you know, these transition costs that you keep talking about? I mean, I, I have a hard time thinking that they're even where trans, or support the, uh, sixty thousand dollars a year. To maintain the building, let alone. So we have to figure out some way to get some money. And you know, if we could work together on that, that would be great.
Yeah, as a committee member, and just a tiny thing, um. You know, but you make a good point about like where we are in terms of communication of all these groups. And, and so it's true that we haven't been communicating, but we, um. Or haven't, like, we're all kind of starting up, but, um, over the summer, but I, I, um. People from each one of these committees have made an effort, especially in the last week, like since this agenda came out. To figure out how to, um, talk to each other more, more, more purposefully. Um, and to this, I include the Roxbury Select Board in there. So I just want you to know that there are. And I mean, Rhett kind of said this earlier, but there are a lot of folks in Roxbury. Who are on one of a, a couple, a handful of different groups and are, and we're making an effort to. Figure out how to link all of our conversations because there's overlap. But then, as Rhett said, there's also. You know, there are folks who are, you know, rightfully more concerned with how is their kid's experience. Getting to and from school. And that's like, kind of like one very big and important focus. And then there are folks who, you know, like, I don't, I don't have little kids, you know, so we're trying to think about the building. So I think that there are a lot of really rich and generative conversations happening. And, and we are. Excited to be able to talk to the school board and, and you get more information on the community over the next.
And we do have a select board member on our committee. So he's, you know, like the liaison.
Yeah.
He gets the brunt of all. But also I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for working out the transportation issue. Because, you know, that, that was huge. And now people, um, my daughter who has two kids come, come, she's very happy with the, with the setup. So the extra work was definitely worth it.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I mean, we've got a timeline for this process, but we could very much come out of the same. We need more time to, to work with the town, to work with other entities to, you know, think about, think so. Um, we are, we are in no rush to make quick decisions.
The only, our only timeline and same as yours is the budget.
Yeah.
You know, that when, when the selector puts a budget together, they've got to put. Depending on what you guys say, they have to have a budget item to maintain that facility after July of next year. Cause that's when we figure. Everybody in town figured that's what we're gonna get it.
So. Um. Further questions or comments? And then, uh, you know, again, this is, this is just. Introduction and then we're having, you know, a series more conversations with both of ourselves and the community.
And I think October 2nd, there will, there's likely to be something.
A forum.
More, more intentionally warned like this that would have a second. Potentially, we would be able to warn a second public comment. I don't know if we'll have a presentation, then there'll be a, a second public comment and that would be at RBS. Which would, and obviously Montpelier would be welcome and we'll, we'll then again reach out to Montpelier as well because. Yeah. Montpelier has an interest, I think, in. You know, passing budgets and.
Yeah.
You know, not causing harm, I think.
And we want to encourage Britten comment on that too.
And just in terms of timeline, we have for the next board meeting. Facility State of the State, and then we also have the executive session with the lawyer on the agenda, but this could also be. You know, a follow-up. Again, like if there are specific questions about any one of these hypothetical scenarios that you could get to Libby and Jim and I to get. Back into the conversation, since this was a broad overview that would help keep the conversation going. Even outside of the more like legal advice we would get from the lawyer at the next. Um, at the next board meeting, just to, just to say, we don't have to only do the executive session about this at the next board meeting. So that board members can, you know. Keep asking questions and keep thinking about the different options.
All right, excellent. Um, next item is policy monitoring reports, uh, which is eight twenty-one, public participation at board meetings. Eight twenty-two, notice of non-discrimination. Next item is policy monitoring reports, uh, which is A twenty-one, public participation in board meetings, A twenty-two, notice of non-discrimination. And FM one hundred, sounds like a radio station, legislative execution.
Yes.
Um. Do I have a motion to approve the policy monitor reports?
Uh, I move we approve the monitoring reports for those policies, A twenty-one, A twenty-two, and FM one hundred.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion or questions about those reports?
Wonderfully enthusiastic.
Very none, others in favor?
Aye.
Any?
Aye.
Any post, uh, policy board reports pass, uh. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I move it, we adjourn.
Uh, do you have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.